Morning, Raymond.
He's in shots once he's dead.
Good morning, everyone. If I have y'all's attention, we'll go ahead and get started. I call the order, the August 30th, 2018 Border Supervisors Meeting. I ask you to call the order, the Planning Commission meeting first. As with all our meetings, we'll start off with the indication. If y'all will pray with me, please. I have the Father, we thank you for the many blessings and opportunities you provide us each and every day. We ask for your wisdom and guidance today as we make decisions on behalf of citizens of Rankin County, as well as those other numerous boards throughout the state make the decisions for their people as well. You know the needs of the friends and loved ones in our heart. We provide grace and love to them and help those hating hands. Give them the needed relief they so desperately deserve. We I C C in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. All right, Ms. Renee. I entertain a motion, consider the August 2nd minutes. So there is Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Old business, Ms. Renee.
Okay, we have two hearings scheduled for the 4th, September 4th. Would y'all like to review either of those?
I'm good with it. Anybody have any questions about any of the two items? All right, we'll move on then to new considerations then.
Okay. The first item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for Germiner Singh at Highway 25 and Lone Pine Church Road. Mr. Singh is seeking the conditional use permit to construct a 3,500 square foot convenience store. This property is located on the southwest corner of Highway 25 and Lone Pine Church Road. It's a 40 acre parcel that's zoned A2. That's an aerial view of that property. Mr. Singh wants to be, to see if he can be approved for this use before he obtains a detailed site plan and architectural renderings for the building. This is just a preliminary plan. He shows access coming in off of Lone Pine. The store will be located here. This is a two acre site that he's showing the store on. He'll have gas pumps out front. He shows a proposed detention area here and he does plan to sell beer from this location. These are views of that property. And then this is just surrounding at the intersection there on Highway 25 and Lone Pine Church Road. Mr. Singh is here today. If y'all have any questions for him.
Any questions?
Mr. Singh. I've known about this. I think maybe somebody's representing you told me y'all were gonna do, or planned to do something here. There's a church behind this location.
It's about, almost 2,000 feet, yeah.
I told him, the guy that's representing you, you know, that that church is gonna have to be happy with this.
I already talked to them. They are. They said just be a good neighbor.
I'll need to meet with them.
I understand.
There's a few other little things that we might have to look at too, but that's the biggie right there. That's all I got.
All right, thanks.
Is there a motion set to hearing now?
Do we have enough, Renee, to set it?
Yes, sir. If it's approved, it'll just be approved contingent upon, you know, him coming back for a site plan, architectural review, and then you'll have an opportunity to address issues related to that.
I'll make the motion, we set it.
Second, first by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
All right, next is a conditional use permit for Peggy Syke at 109 Mission Drive. Ms. Syke is seeking the conditional use permit to place a new 16 by 80 manufactured home. It'll be a second dwelling on this property. The property is located on the west side of Mission Drive. This is a 5.162 acre parcel. It's zoned RE1A. This is an aerial view. Mission Drive splits that property or divides it, and there was an existing manufactured home on the property here. It was removed in 2014. This is Mrs. Syke's house. They want to put the new home in the same spot as where the other mobile home was.
That one's gone and they're just gonna replace it.
That's right. It was moved out in 2014. This is, these are views of that property. This is the location of where the mobile home will be going. This is a shot of that property. This is on the Sykes' property as well, and this is Mrs. Syke's home. The home will be for her daughter to live in, and these are surrounding properties.
We set the public hearing. I'll make the motion, set the public hearing.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, set it. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
There's a conditional use permit for Darren and Shelley Sparks at 5658 Highway 18. They're seeking a conditional use permit to operate a welding shop in an existing building on their property. It will be on a part-time basis. This property is located on the west side of Highway 18. They own a total of 18.3 acres. It's zoned A2. That's an aerial view of the property. They have, their home is on this property as well. This is their site plan. That existing building sits here, right off of 18, and then their home is at the back. This is a view of that building. This is the entrance going into their property. They do wanna place a sign along the highway to advertise for the business, and these are surrounding properties. Mrs. Sparks is here today if you have any questions.
Ms. Sparks, you have any idea what your hours of operation are going to be?
Really just part-time. It wasn't anything that my husband was wanting to do full-time. It was really just to have a supplemental income. It's just something he's always kinda done on the side. And we had a sign up there originally because we did not know that we weren't supposed to. And there was, and there was just a steady flow of people that would stop and come by. Little bitty agricultural, you know, bushhogs and that, you know, that type of thing out where we live at. And then apparently someone complained about it, and we took the sign down, and the traffic just kinda stopped. So that's why we're trying to do this. It's not anything full-time. I mean, it would be great if he could get to where he could do more of that than what he's having to do now, but...
It's a good piece off the road, though, isn't it?
I think it's what...
It's not visible from 18. The building's not...
No, the building is not visible.
But I think the kicker is, it's gonna be the sign and the traffic it generates.
The, the... The sign, now, it wasn't anything, we didn't have like 20 people coming today, but I mean, we had, you know, he had three or four little jobs a week. Or something, and the sign was right, right back behind where that ditch is on the left side of the picture on the screen.
We'll go ahead and set the public hearing, but we will be attuned to the neighbors down there. If, when we put the sign up, if those same folks who complained before step back up, we'll have to take that into consideration.
I understand.
If they come and see, and see what they have to say too, and what, and we may be able to figure out a way to compromise and address concerns, but I'll go ahead and make a motion, we set the public hearing for October 1.
I'll second it, but...
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Where, kinda where on 18 is this?
It's down below Fletcher Road.
It's between Johns and Puckett. We're actually about five miles, four and a half, five miles outside Puckett.
That's right. I can't remember the name, but it's right past Fletcher, about a half a mile, three quarters mile.
It is. It's about, it's about a half a mile past Fletcher Road.
Way down, yeah. I got it.
And the shop is, once you make that curve and you go up between those two trees, it's right there. It's just that clump, that huge oak tree, and the clump of trees makes it to where, in the wintertime, it's a little more visible once the leaves fall off, but right there, you just can't see it.
The only point we get into, you start there that he wants the next conditional use for a used car lot, and this, that, and the other, but we'll still have that discussion. I will. You have something else to say, Jay? You're good?
I'm good.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sparks. Next, Renee.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Jackson Cellular Telephone doing business as Verizon Wireless at 566 Williams Road. They're seeking the conditional use permit to construct a cell tower on this property. It's located on the east side of Williams Road. This is a 32.25 acre parcel zoned A1. That's an aerial view of the property. There is a home on this property. This is their site plan. It's not that clear, but the house is here, and then the tower is gonna be here. The tower will be 211 feet tall, including the lightning rod and the foundation. It will be 590 feet off Williams Road, and the application says there's a row of hardwoods on the front and sides of the property that will remain and serve as a visual buffer to the tower site. This is their elevation, and it does show that they have two additional spaces for carriers to co-look, co-look, I can't talk, co-locate their equipment on the tower. These are pictures that they submitted with the application, showing the views from the site to the north, and then again, the site to the east. This is to the south, and then to the west. This is the property where the tower will be going. And then these are surrounding properties. I'm not sure if anybody's, okay. There is somebody here today. If y'all have any questions.
I do. If you, come up and introduce yourself, please.
Good morning. I'm David McGee.
Hi, David.
Represent Verizon in this application.
My question would be, you know, this type of pole versus the monopole. Monopole is just pretty much, that this is a little bit wider type pole, if I'm...
It's a little bit wider at the, at the base. At the, you know, the, the top part is, is not a whole lot different, and, and the reason they went with this design is strictly the height. So, so monopole, you know, they typically go up to about 180, 190, and, and so they, the engineers determined they needed this height to provide the coverage, so that's why.
I was just curious, last time I did one, it was on the city board, and it was a monopole up here off Tucker Bridge Road, and I guess monopoles are used more in for the cities.
That's correct.
Where you're not trying to get quite as widespread as you are on these type poles out of the county.
That's correct. And, you know, like she said, this one is, is, it's about just under 600 feet off of Williams Road, and there are quite a few trees that, that, you know, will not be removed, you know, for this installation. A little clearing back there, and couldn't go any further back 'cause the creek back there flooded.
The base will be, base will be covered by the landscaping. You, I think I went down a little subdivision across the street there on Island Drive and came back out, and you'll be able to get, you'll see the top of it, which, you know, I think you'll become part of the landscape. But you got any questions? Because that side of the road is you.
No, most of the residential's on Bill. That's on my side. Yeah. I don't, I know exactly where it's sitting. I know all these houses.
I don't have a problem with it, but I...
I don't see it's gonna be a problem, but I mean...
I do wanna give the folks out there the opportunity to have their comments on this as well. I made the motion, we set the public hearing for October 1. Motion by myself, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Next, Ms. Renee.
All right, next is a conditional use permit for Erin Beaman at 201 Emmanuel Jones Road. She's seeking the conditional use permit to replace an existing manufactured home with a 2018 16 by 80. This property is located at the end of Emmanuel Jones. It's a 17 acre parcel of family land. It's zoned A2. That's an aerial view of the property. There are four other homes on this property. This is the one that's gonna be replaced. That's a picture of the one that will be replaced. And then these are just surrounding.
Make the motion, we set it. Motion, Mr. Gaines, set the hearing. Second, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
Okay, is a site plan architectural review for Vernon McFarland at 1681 Highway 471. Mr. McFarland applied for a zoning change on this property and was approved June the 18th for a change to C2, and he wanted to operate a daycare in an existing building on this property. He's proposing to operate a daycare, I mean, he's proposing now to build a new daycare facility and use the existing home as an office. So this property is located on the west side of 471. It's a 3.22 acre parcel. It is zoned C2. That's an aerial view of the property. And then this is the new site plan. This is the entrance coming in off of 471. It's paved. It goes around to the existing house that will be used for an office, and this is the new building. This is the parking area. He's proposing to do asphalt parking, I believe. These are the elevations of the building. It's gonna be a metal building, metal on the rear and both sides, and he's proposing just three feet of brick along the front.
Do you want that?
Three feet of brick along the front from the bottom up, three feet. That shows, it was supposed to be painted concrete block, but it's not what he's doing. He's only gonna do three feet of brick, or that's what he's proposing to do.
What's above it?
Metal. It's metal. He's here. If y'all have any questions for him. It's gonna be a 3,000, I may have said 2,000, but it's a 3,000 square foot metal building.
That's kinda more inclined to brick.
That was my discussion. Mr. McFarland, are you here?
And that building is 267 feet off 471.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Why don't you kinda paint me a picture in your mind of the situation and the setup there? Tell me about it.
Okay, right now, there's, that's the current home on the property.
Right.
The home has been there for over 30 years. After looking at the property and talking to various contractors about renovating it, it's a, it is a center block home. It's a solid building. However, there's no central area in it. Essentially, it's a whole re, a gut and renovation project, so after talking to them, it's like, just build a building. And, so we looked at some different prices for that, and came to the realization that it'd be easier to just gut that building, make it an administrative office space, and then actually build on the property, because it's three and a half, 3.2 acres. Build a daycare, so you have more space and usable space there on the plateau of that lot.
And you were gonna pave it all the way into the property itself?
Yeah, the plan, the plan on the site plan is, right now, that there is a, so this is a property line here where that, that asphalt driveway is, and it goes all the way to the current building. So we would widen that road, and then, so that road would then lead into the parking lot, which would be a kind of a loop around to the current building.
Do you have any heartburn over maybe paving the entire front side only? I mean, not paving, but breaking the entire front side of the structure?
I, I don't. It's just...
I'd like to see him break the whole thing.
I'll go the, I'll go the three side, maybe not the back, but, but I said, you know...
But tell me, tell me, tell me your thoughts. Well, it's off the road, but I mean, I agree with you. I agree with you.
My problem is, right down the road, you got an office building that, I can't remember the guy's name, you know, and it's all brick, it's a nice, you know, and most, most of your commercial structures are on that are office-related or professional-related are all brick, and I just thought, see, we're setting a bad...
Well, this would be, be a daycare. Again, it's a, a building that, it is, the building that we did quote is certified to over 115 miles an hour, wind resistance. And again, my daughter went to Truvine daycare, which closed down, so that's where we got the idea. My wife has always wanted to have, run a daycare. She's certified to do that, and a school teacher there at Halle Bluff Elementary School. So this is a goal and plan of ours, and so I didn't want to mislead anyone. The reason why we had initially the center block is because that's what we were using. The current building that's there was brick center block. And so it's just a cost thing. Again, I'm still getting quotes right now, but with the building being a metal building, my understanding, there were other daycares in the area that were metal building. I didn't know there'd be an issue with it. And I am familiar with the building you referred to on 471. I drive by it every day, so, you know, I, I understand.
It's not, it's not so much daycare to daycare. It's really what's in the neighborhood. We kinda look for symmetrically, and you got homes out there. The majority of those homes are all brick, so it, you know, and I know there's some concrete block, you know, center block, stuff like that, but anything new construction, we need to, we have, need to set the tone, and I'm just kinda...
Well, we've done it on numerous things in the area, around the 25 area and corridor there, but would, would you mind looking into the cost and see if there'd be something possible for breaking at least the front side, if not two, well, it's three of the four sides? Do you mind looking into that?
Yeah, I, that's no problem. It's something I am considering. It's just, it's, I have a full-time job. I'm in the process of hiring a contractor now, but I wanted to lay the groundwork as quickly as possible to get this done.
I think if we can look into the brick siding of the whole thing, I think we're in a pretty good spot. So everything else looks good, but if you mind looking back on that and maybe touching base with, with Renee's office?
Okay, will do.
David, what about the parking lot?
He's paved that all the way through?
Well, but he says widen it.
Yeah, that, that will be paved.
Well, I mean, it's a private drive. I mean, you're gonna widen it to...
I, I did submit an updated site plan from a civil engineer that shows it's, it's duplicated, so essentially that, that road will be doubled in, in size, and I would like to clear off the fir, the front edge of the property will be cleared off of sight on, when you come traversing 471. So my, my daughter will be going there, so I want a very safe place, and, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not something I, I want to, cut any corners on.
One other thing, Tim Parker has reviewed the grading and drainage plan. He needs some more information. So if you approve it, we need to do it contingent upon his approval of the grading and drainage plan for that property. And also be clear on the parking, what y'all want on, on the parking lot. Pavement?
Oh, yeah, 100%. Was that an option? Was that my...
Well, I mean, I wanted Mr. McFarland to understand.
Parents, elderly folks too, coming picking up kids, so we don't need rocks, you know?
Because eventually at one, it's way back out.
Well, I, my question in regards to the pavement, there are multiple types. I mean, there's asphalt. There's the rock pavement where you kinda, so is there a specification for the pavement, or...
Just asphalt. I don't know what chips is.
I don't know the different layers of it. Renee, do you have any?
Asphalt.
Just asphalt?
Just enough to hold up with the traffic you think's gonna be on it?
And if you've got another suggestion that might be better, but that would be paved, bring it back to us. Let us look at it.
Okay.
I mean, if you can find another option that'd be something similar, let us look at it and see.
Let's do this. I mean, if he's willing to go ahead and, and break it all, if it works out and makes sense, there ain't no sense to him to wait 30 days to come back. We can approve it, assuming that that is concerned, but if he wants any modification off the, all four walls or three walls, whatever we wanna do, then he need to come back to get the next meeting to, to get that approval. That kind of reasonable, Renee, to kinda do it that way, to go that way, if he's willing to do it. That work for you, Mr. McFarland? What is it, three or four walls?
I mean, I would at least say three at this point, after the discussion of the other buildings around, so...
Ms. Bishop, you had a comment?
I'm all right with that, which I want.
Sir?
I'm, I'm okay.
You're okay? I think the, the deal here, Mr. McFarland, maybe if you'll be willing to break the front and the two, the north and south wall, you know, that you've, you've got the approval. We need to address any other issues that he's got?
Just contention, contention upon the drainage, grading and drainage.
That too.
And the parking lot being asphalt.
Parking lot being asphalt. We'll prove it like that, and if you wanna deviate from that, then you'll need to come back at the next meeting, but if you, if you decide to go that direction, then it'd be good to go. Does that sound reasonable?
It sounds good.
Okay. All right, they hear a motion. Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McFarland. We appreciate it.
Good luck.
All right, Ms. Renee, on to the nuisance properties. Sorry, I brought it slow out.
That's okay. That's not a problem. The first nuisance consideration is Jonathan Lawson, nuisance property at 392 East Mountain Creek Farm Road. This is a District 1 property. This time, we will open that public hearing, and I'll ask Renee to demonstrate for us.
All right, we've received numerous complaints on this property in the past. These pictures were taken in July, July the 10th. There's some rubbish and debris. Vehicle being worked on. And then these are the new pictures that were taken August the 28th, Tuesday. The property is better than we've seen it in the past. But anyway, Mr. Lawson is here, I think.
Vehicle. Go back, right there. The dark spot, where is it?
He's here. Mr. Lawson is here today.
Yeah, why don't you come up, please? Good morning. You're gonna need to state your name and your address, just for the, for the record.
Jonathan Lawson, 392 East Mountain Creek Road.
Morning. What, what's, the white car at the back door, what's that, back to the back? The dark...
The back of the white car?
No, I think he's asking about the black stuff.
Yeah, the black one, yeah.
It's just a, more or less a, a fence.
A fence?
Metal sheet.
Okay. What, what is it doing?
Where a burn at.
Oh, it's a burn pit, you know, sense, I guess. All right, and what's the other stuff? And I'm gonna get to what I'm getting at in a minute. What's the other, the breeze that's like back along the wood line that's, shoot your laser up there, right there?
I can't tell from this.
It's close.
Oh, right here.
Yeah. There, and then back there against the wood line, that's just...
A little small trailer with some building supply there.
All right, I'm gonna tell you the problem. The problem is, and it's just unfortunate where you, the corner you live on. You live on Main Road, which is East Mountain Creek, and then you also got the road right there. And it's, it's, it's a lot of traffic there, so I mean, you're sticking out there. If you were down on some dead end somewhere, somebody may never even notice things, but when they leave out, they drive up, they see your backyard, okay? And, and it looks pretty clean now, but I, I will have to agree with them now, what you do. And this is what they'll say, and this, and I, I agree with them. You get cleaned up, and it looks pretty good, and then you start hauling limbs and debris and stuff in there, and then you get another car out there and you get it torn apart. So you, you clean it up for the, I guess, the show or for the hearing, where it looks all good, and they're, you know, they go, well, that's better. And then the next thing you know, I'm getting phone calls from people that are traveling here, people that even from out of town that are coming to visit. They go, they talk about it. So, I mean, it's a situation that you live where you live, that you're standing out in the center of everything. And I mean, I mean, you, you can't help it, but in that, so you're kinda in the bull's eye. And like I say, you know, if it was fenced in, nobody saw anything in your backyard, they'd probably like that even better, but y'all don't realize where it's sitting, but I mean, he's literally sitting right on East Mountain Creek and right on the corner of the south, the south end? Yeah. Yeah. Anyway, right on the corner, and you got people that cut through there, and people that live all of them down to there, and so they leave out, I mean, you got the ball road down there, everybody lives on it. They leave out, they're looking right in your backyard every morning. And so you can, you can clean, and just like the burning, they'll get to, they'll call about all the burning you're doing. I mean, I'm, I'm on both sides here. I, I understand, I hear them. I know that's where you live, but you live in a place that's, that's, I mean, it's, they see it every day, and you, you are, and this is what you do each time. You clean it out. I wrote about the other day, you had a pile of garbage cans sitting out, a 55 gallon drum sitting between that little building and your trailer, slam full of garbage. I mean, I saw that myself. Well, I mean, so do they. I mean, if you got garbage, put it in the road, let the garbage people pick it up. Don't burn it. You're really only supposed to burn certain things. I don't know what all you're burning, but I mean, technically, you're... And you're really only supposed to burn certain things, I don't know what all you're burning, but I mean, technically, you're not supposed to be burning anything, uh, limbs. So I don't really know why you need a burn pit, a fenced in area to burn in, or what are, what are you burning?
It's just, if anything, I didn't end it, uh, the yard, I just put it in there to burn, it's, it's just so that you don't see, see the trash from the road.
Well, you're not supposed to be burning trash. I mean, that's.
Vegetated debris.
Yeah, you're just, supposedly just limbs and things. But like I said, if you live down off the, dead end off in the middle of nowhere, nobody knows the difference, you just, it's where you live. So you're gonna have to keep it clean, and I'm, I mean, you, I'm so tired of hearing the phone calls and complaining about it, and I'm on your side too, this is where you live. But I also have to listen to others, I mean, I'm on both sides. I'm not throwing darts at you, but I'm just passing on, I get to all, I'm getting darts shot at me and phone calls over and over about it. And that, and you're notorious for doing just what they say, oh, he'll clean it up, when y'all get on to him, he'll clean it up. And then in a, you know, gone, he does it again, and you'll bring those cars down and start tearing them apart. Right out there in the backyard, well, what do you think they're gonna see? That, and then it stays there, then it grows up and you don't get the grass cut, then they call about, it's grown up. You know, it's, it's bad when they got people coming to see them, and they say, what's the deal with that house on the corner? With, with all the debris and everything. You're just gonna have to keep it clean, 'cause I don't know what to do, 'cause I'm not, I'm just gonna put it blunt. I'm not gonna keep putting up phone calls, I'm gonna do whatever I have to do to make you keep it cleaned up, 'cause I'm up to here with these phones. We've been doing this for what, four years?
It's been a while.
Yeah, I mean, you're agreed, so I mean, come on, am I being unreasonable? Four years? And it doesn't take anything for you to keep it cleaned up. I mean, if you keep it clean like that and keep things neat, uh, the best you can, I don't think you have a problem. But you start getting it, as soon as you start putting something out there, the phone, my phone's gonna ring. How come, y'all can't make him do this? The next thing, we will have you up at court, and the judge will be handling it, and I don't think you want that. I mean, I'm trying to help you, and I'm trying to help them, but you, you agree, four years, and you can see, I'm pretty, I've had enough of it. So, you know, if, uh, you can keep it clean like that, and I'm gonna tell you, as far as I'm concerned, really, this burning thing, you're probably gonna get, they're gonna start complaining about that. 'Cause I have had them talk about the smoke and the smell, you know? I don't know what he's burning, but it sure does smell bad. So they're gonna call the fire department down there, and then they're gonna, it's gonna go one thing, leads to another. So I don't think the burning's a good idea. I mean, if I were you, I'd tear that thing down and make that clean, neat there, and tend to my burning somewhere else or, 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 only if it's limbs you could burn. But you don't have any limbs out there, you clean it up. Now, one time you were bringing, uh, looks like.
Sounds to me like I'd get a fence put up.
Or one time you were bringing, uh, uh.
Seems like a lot of people wanna drive by your house and complain.
One thing, weren't you bringing some kind of like, where you've been like, cut limbs or something from something, all the trailer loads in there, did you?
Yes, that's been a couple of years back.
Yeah. Oh, I'm saying, that's not a rubbish pit, you can't be doing that. I mean, I know what you're doing, I understand, I mean, but we just, this is the last time, you're gonna have to get it cleaned. And I don't want to have to call them and have them back down there again, and I don't want to have to keep hearing these phone calls, these emails, emails with pictures. They send me pictures. I mean, you just know what we go through, some of this stuff, but you can, you can help yourself and help me and help the community and show that you got it, you've, you can turn a new leaf. And I really wish you'd do that, I mean, I, I don't wanna be hard on you. I mean, you're a hard worker like me, and Lord knows, I know all about that, and I just, just try to keep it neat as you can. I, I'd appreciate that, 'cause this is the last time. Okay, all right.
You might could just get you a little piece of fence, put it right there, and that might solve all of your problems.
Yeah, fence come all the way down, cover the whole thing, eight foot.
I mean, like, from the drive to the right, just the right side, right side of the drive?
Yeah, cover that completely, where they can't see back there. But still, that ain't the reason to keep burning and them calling about what, where else he burning, 'cause, you know, I know it. Like I said, you, if you live somewhere else, probably nothing ever be seen. It's just unfortunate, you hawked that house, uh, right there on the corner. The guy that was there way before you had some same problem. I mean, the, the guy that initially put it there, I, I don't remember who it was, I guess you bought it from, from them or somebody, yeah. He had some same problem, he was dumping TVs out there, so. Anyway, you're just in the center point of everything, that's all. Got a church down the road, up and down the road, you know, people going to church.
All right.
All right.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Morrison?
Well, I mean, he's got it like it is now, I mean, I can't declare it a nuisance because he's cleaned it up.
Right.
But don't go junk it back up.
So, so for the record, we'll close the public hearing, Jared, my suggestion would be that we simply note for the record, and, and Renee will note it for the, for her records, that the property was cleaned up, uh, and that this particular nuisance hearing is terminated. And obviously, if, if complaints arise again, we will restart the process.
Well, Mr. Lawson.
Can we put it to the point where you don't have to, uh, we don't have to restart the whole thing? Since this is a repeat, we need a repeat?
We can, we can monitor it for another 60 or 90 days and then take action to close, to close it out. Uh, and, and so what the, what the motion would be, Jared, would, since the hearing is closed, the motion would be to simply, uh, uh, table the consideration of the nuisance for a period of whatever you decide, I would say 90 days, and let Renee.
90 days is fine, uh.
Monitor it. If it stays clean for 90 days, that's over.
Because, see, what happens, we go through that whole process again, it takes us another 60 days, and then the, the people, so, I mean, that's, that's their thing. All you do is clean it up, then we start all over again, what can we do to make it stay there? And you can do that, so you, you just do it and I'll be, everybody'll be happy.
So that would be the motion, yeah, 90 days.
90 days.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second, by, uh, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries, thank you. Mrs. Renee, or Mr. Slade?
Yes, the next consideration is the Mildred Fletcher nuisance consideration at 112 Floyd Street, this is District One. Uh, we'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate for us.
All right, we've received complaints about this property, these pictures are dated, are dated June 22nd. Uh, there's a manufactured home in there, this property is just overgrown, abandoned mobile home. We sent the certified mail and one of the letters was signed for, um, we haven't had a response though, these are the new pictures, there's no change.
Is this, or so nobody's here today?
Is, is Mildred Fletcher or anyone on behalf of Mildred Fletcher here? I, I don't, Ms., Jared, I don't see anyone here representing Ms. Fletcher.
All right, let me, Renee, is this one of the ones that somebody lives out, that's out of town or something, is this local?
This had a local address, um.
'Cause I know there was one in there that was kind of like that, that thing they.
Dwayne said she did call, I'll just let him tell you.
She called, and I tried to call her back and got no answer.
Figured out who you were then. All right, well, let's make this a quick, declare it a nuisance.
Yes, sir.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second.
We gotta close the public hearing, Mr. Mo-, Mr. Morrison has a motion to declare the nuisance, we send it up to Justice Court.
Got it.
Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion carries, next, Mr. Slade.
All right, item C under nuisance is the Pauline Spencer nuisance property at 414 Bird Road, District One. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
All right, we've received complaints on this property for a good while, um, they used to have some campers here, and the campers were moved, but this other stuff has remained. These pictures were taken in May. There is a mailbox, and Mrs. Spencer, it appears she gets her garbage bill, her waste management bill at this address. But we've never had any contact with her, we can't, I can't find any, um, different address for her. These pictures were taken in August, there is no, no change.
Yeah, they just moved out, left all this.
Rubbish and debris, grass.
Let me ask the record if there's anyone here on behalf of Pauline Spencer?
All right, I gotta, uh, I'm gonna declare it a nuisance, but I got a question, as far as these vehicles, what do we have to do? What has to be done, at what point where we could just tell somebody, go pick them up? I mean, nothing that we'd have to do, we just say?
There's an abandon.
Sheriff, pick them up, or whatever, and get rid of them.
There's an abandoned vehicle process, um, I would have to defer to the sheriff's legal counsel.
We used to have a list for people to come get them.
Right.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, at what point can we do that?
Let me, let me interact with Paul Holly and or Richard Lawrence at the sheriff's office and make sure that if, if they have a process that we can conscript for our purposes as well, even though that's not on a public road, it's on private property. That's my concern about that, Jared, I want to make sure we don't do something we don't need to do.
Well, can't the judge take care of that?
Yeah, I, I think as part of the nuisance process, the judge can enter an order, uh, declaring them to be abandoned, Jared, and, and then giving some period of time, along with the requisite notice that complies with whatever that statute is. And that'll give us the, uh, I think that with the protection of that order, we'd have the flexibility then to have someone come and actually get them. My hope would be that we can find somebody to come drag them off, uh, for the scrap.
That's not a problem, I should call somebody to get them today, if I could, you know?
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're gonna be waiting on the court process.
I understand, I understand, getting them's not a problem, I just want the, the legal part to have a move.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, I declare it a nuisance.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, second, by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion carries, next, Mr. Slade.
Item D under nuisance is the Ralph Bradshaw nuisance property, 143 Elsie Rose, District One property. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate for us.
All right, so, um, Mr. Elsie was here, um, this was tabled for 60 days. Uh, this is a zoning violation, he purchased some property and he didn't get an acre, he only owns like point eight nine. Um, and so it was tabled until today, I'm not sure, it doesn't appear that he's here.
So, uh, you guys may recall that, um, adjacent to Mr. Bradshaw's property is a, a piece of, a, a property that's in an estate proceeding. And it also is not compliant because it is, uh, an amount of acreage that is less than required by our zoning ordinance. And so you've got two different issues that are involved here. We suggested, at the time you tabled the prior hearing, that those two parties get together and try to figure out how to solve both of their issues. One being the estate wanting to get rid of a piece of property, the other being this gentleman in bad need of some additional property. And we felt like those things could probably work together to solve two problems. To my knowledge, there has been no attempt in either direction to solve that problem. And so my suggestion would simply be that we close Mr. Bradshaw's nuisance consideration, declare it a nuisance.
Well, before we go that far, uh, recently, I found out that the health department came out and did an inspection for a new construction of less than an acre, and they didn't have to have an engineer system, and they got a pass for a sprinkler. So I would maybe suggest the health department say this won't work first.
All right, I did, um, check with the health department to see if he had any kind of system and an approval, it's malfunctioning in there. They've noticed him, that, you know, there's a problem, so.
But is it possible that if he gets the system working, would it work with the amount of acreage that he has?
He's still in violation of the zoning ordinance, Jake, he's gotta have an acre. He's at point six.
No, point eight nine, I think is what he's got.
He's gotta fix his zoning issue, and I, I mean, the only way I know that he can do that is to get an adjacent property owner to work with him.
How did the guy, they talking about then, I mean, I understand the zoning issue, but how did he get by?
I would assume in that particular situation, it's in an area that doesn't have a one acre meter.
Oh, fine, okay.
Oh, oh.
But look, we brought this up on nuisance, we didn't bring it up on the zoning, did we?
Yeah, well, we can, we can do, it's a, it's a zoning violation that we're aware of, there are, that was the reason why we brought it before you under nuisance considerations.
How long, but, then he actually lived in it now?
He does.
And he's been there how long?
Actually, he did not get a permit for that manufactured home either, uh.
Oh, really?
He said he wanted to, uh, clear the land, and so he had a, a meter there, and so, uh, we actually found out that it was there.
This is something that was discovered after the fact, happens to us. They, uh, we, we believe that at some point in the process, this property began life as one total parcel. And then as an estate came online, there was this breaking it up into smaller segments, and that's what got him in trouble on the zoning. So again, my, my suggestion would be we close the public hearing and that we go ahead and just.
What do we do with it?
Declare it a nuisance and send it up to Justice Court.
It's really not a nuisance.
It's a zoning violation, but it's still.
Okay, all right, you sent it up there, what are we gonna do, put the man out?
We're gonna ask the court to order him to clear his zoning violation.
Okay, how does he do that?
He finds that piece, that tenth, tenth of an acre piece of property next door, that is for sale. Problem solved. I think he told Renee candidly, he told Renee that he would just wait until the estate property was available via tax sale. That's how he would fix his problem.
Well, in that, the one had, uh, some kind of a dwelling on it too, that needed to be torn down?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we don't have a picture of that other, uh, property.
All right, well, this is getting sticky here.
In the beginning, if they were to come to get a permit to move a trailer in there, all of this would have been corrected at that time.
That's great.
They would have known it.
They would have known in advance.
Wouldn't have been a permit issue.
But there wasn't an application for a permit.
How long did, did he say, how long has it been there, or do you know?
Uh, it's in that file, it's been several years, um, he.
It looks like it. That's all right, I just, that's okay, it's been a while, you can tell.
What's your pleasure?
Declare it a nuisance, I don't know what else to do with it.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, declare it a nuisance, second, by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion carries, next, Mr. Slade.
Yes, item E under nuisance considerations is a review hearing for Danny and Judy Hall at 521 Holly Bush Road. Uh, we're gonna open that review hearing and ask Renee to help us, uh, demonstrate with some photos.
All right.
And some, and some information about how we got to this point.
All right, so, um, Mrs. Hall was approved for a conditional use permit to operate a bed and breakfast in this, uh, home on Holly Bush, 521 Holly Bush Road. We've received a report that, um, it had been converted into apartments. And also that even her primary residence, that some of that, uh, was being rented out for apartments as well. Uh, so these are pictures of the bed and breakfast. And then this is her primary residence, uh, 523 Holly Bush Road. So basically, I sent a letter, uh, just notifying her that we'd received a report, um, and asked if we could come out and inspect the property. In the course of that, um, you know, we talked back and forth via email and different things, and, um, anyway, I had told her I would schedule an appointment to come out the next week, and then I couldn't get her on the phone, uh, the first two days. And so I just, uh, scheduled a review and notified her, you know, to be here today, uh, just to, uh, tell the board exactly what she does do at, on the property there. We have seen some advertising, uh, where it's been advertised, uh, as an apartment, as apartments, uh, many times. She says that it's apartments, she said it was converted into a five-plex on the, uh, white structure, the older home that's being used as a bed and breakfast.
I believe the halls are here, I just didn't come forward and, uh, explain to the board what's going on. Please state your name and address for the record.
Morning.
Good morning.
Judy Hall.
Good, good morning, Ms. Hall, would you mind just kinda, uh, just clarify the whole thing for me? If you would just kinda go through and run me through 521 and 523, the bed and breakfast issue, the apartment issue, just kinda help me put a, as Slade says, put a bow around it for me.
With the permission, um, we, we lived there, we moved there in 98, and we occupied that home first, about her break-in. And he had pretty much, um, modernized it, um, with a lot of renovation, but in 98. But in 98, we bought it from Brinkley, and we moved there, and we lived there until 2007. So at that point, we built the house next door, which is 7,500 square feet, five bedrooms, which would address why there may be so many cars there. My brother and his family lived there with us. But at any rate, when we moved from that location, we did not structurally change this place. It's historical. It's 120 years old. And so we came upon this idea that of a bed and breakfast. In 2008, we did get permission to do that, and we've never ceased doing that. Now, as far as apartments, the only way, this is misconstrued, is this. If you have a true hotel and bed and breakfast, if you have an unruly guest, then you, you have the right to have them removed. I ask your help with this matter, that if we have an unruly guest, they need to be removed that day. There's nothing finer than Rankin County Sheriff's Department. They have helped me more than once. But somehow, along the way, their hands became tied. That, and that would be, that would be subsequent to making it more of an apartment, which is what I was told, what they had to live with, and they don't. So if we can all get on the same page, that this can be a bed and breakfast, and it's not an apartment, and don't make me live as if there is one. And I make, what I mean is, if you have somebody unruly, it can take me 30, 60, 90 days to remove them, and they were just a guest. There's no sense in that. That just causes more.
On the bed and breakfast side of it?
Yeah. When this house, if I have an unruly guest, and I called the Sheriff's Department for help, I will be told they have to acknowledge this as though it's an apartment complex. And it's not. The average square foot of space is 300 square feet per unit.
All right, do you have an example of that? I mean, when you've called the sheriff's office before?
Oh, yeah. Well, just the other day, we had a person that had showed up on our property. And, and I have in no fault, in no way, not appreciative of Rankin County Sheriff's Department. I bowed to them. They are wonderful. But anyway, the young man who was very gracious, very polite, he came because we had an unruly lady on the property trying to frequent one of those units to see someone. We'd already given her fair no's, don't come back to this property, you're troublesome, we don't want any trouble here. When before, before we could get her gone, and what, we couldn't get her gone, we called the Sheriff's Department and they said, we can't, we can't move her out of this. We, she's not really trespassing. This is just a gray area here. This person was causing disturbance on our property. If you were at a hotel and you were acting like that, you'll be gone in five seconds.
All right, so help, help me, help me kinda frame this up. Tell me about the bed and breakfast. How many different rooms do you have that are rented out? How, how do you rent the bed and breakfast out?
I have five units.
Okay, so there's five units in the 521 property?
Five units. It could be seven units, but some of them are like expanding rents.
Okay.
Okay? I, as, as in a hotel, no, no one has a utility bill. Nobody has a cable bill. Nobody has any of that. Just like you went to, it's more like if you went to a Residence Inn.
So is the food included too?
Yes, just a breakfast, a, like prepackaged things in the hallway. I don't do a breakfast or anything. I don't, I don't use a kitchen over there.
How long are your stays when they come in? Do they come in and stay? They can stay a week, two weeks, three days, weekend?
That's another area. We do not have a lease. We just check in, and that is an area where a lot of these people are transplanted from Jackson, that were living in a Residence Inn, that were living in a hotel. So as I research the law about that, there is no limit in the law of what becomes, of when you can come and go or leave, but.
Okay, so, so someone comes in to, where your five to seven rooms, they can rent that room for however long they want? Five years, two years, two days?
Exactly. And I do have a remedy, a remedy to that, because in this environment, you know, you, you don't, you don't need for somebody to plan there.
Right.
And the remedy to that that I have is to change my scope of things in that when you're here over so many days or weeks, or however that may be, you have to change units. Okay? So that would give the ability to never, never have any idea to establish residency, go to the next unit, and that would be, I think, a better way to do business. And that's a recommendation that I have.
But you don't have that place in place right now, do you?
And going through what I've been going through with this, and with the, the hands being tied of law enforcement, I think that would be a remedy to my problem.
Okay, so within the last 30 days or 45 days, we had a deputy come out that couldn't remove a person from your property that was there. They weren't renting a room?
No.
They were not renting a room? They were just coming to see somebody to watch a ballgame or something?
What happened was, what happened was the, the person that was staying there probably invited them there. And so that, that created a prob, that, that became problematic. Because he invited them onto the apartment, but then it still got back to being an apartment. And that's what they called it, was an apartment, and it's not.
How long had that resident, that person been in that room?
He may have been there six months. He has a sick child, and they're waiting on surgery. So he could have been here for six months. And I'm not disputing that stays can be long. It's a good rate. It's a great place. But I, but I am disputing the fact that it is not an apartment. As far as the advertisements go, I, I try never to say apartment. Maybe I have, but we call them units.
Okay. And they're, they're one-room units is what they are, right?
Like the front, the front room was my daughter's bedroom. In that, in that unit, you have a bed, which is mine, just like a bed and breakfast.
Did you stay in the 521? Or do you stay in 523?
We're, me and I.
You're back and forth?
We're in 523. We live in 523. 521 is the one that we utilize for this purpose.
Okay, okay.
What do they do for, what do they do? So are you feeding a service of breakfast?
Breakfast, right. Otherwise, it would be a boarding house.
How do they think, what do they do for meals? They go get it?
And, and hindsight's 2020 in that too. When I converted it to the bed and breakfast, I put little individual kitchenettes in these units, which I will remedy. It's a maintenance headache for me anyway, but more like a Residence Inn. You know, you have a kitchenette in a Residence Inn. So in the future, my idea would be just to have a microwave and a refrigerator. There's a kitchenette in these units.
In, in each room?
In the, yes, in the unit. Just like a, just like a Residence Inn.
Okay. My, my, here's, here's my number one concern on trying to figure the whole thing together. I just want to be sure we don't have a major life safety issue there. As far as people that are living there safe, that are residing in a spot, that they may be believed as a bed and breakfast or an apartment, or whatever they think they, they're living in, that the surroundings in the building is safe for life safety issues. That, that's my number one concern. That's why I'm trying to understand exactly what's on the inside of it.
Right.
And how it's set up. We've got the undersheriff here. If he may want to address on the issue of loitering or any comments or thoughts on that, or removal, he can, he can chime in on that side of it, or if you've got questions from that point. I guess my main thing is, would you have an issue with our folks coming out to 521 and going through it and looking at it to be sure everything is kosher on that side, or?
Well, as I told Renee in the beginning, she said, are you gonna let me do this? I said, why don't I have a choice? You, you know, you have to do this. And, and I really take, really take it to heart about that she thought I was avoiding her. I can prove my thumb was broken. And as soon as I got my screen back on.
I tried to break mine, I promise.
I really, as soon as I got my screen back on, I saw 8252217. That was Tuesday night. Immediately, I sent her an email, but she'd already sent her registered letter for me to be here. But in all bad things, you know, we can make something good out of this. And there are things that could be done differently.
I want to leave it all on a good note, where we're all on the same page, where we understand and you understand our point and our positions, and we can get everything moving and going again, so.
But, but to answer your question about the kitchenettes and all that, we certainly want to convert to just a microwave in the room. Went way overboard with trying to make everything perfect in the beginning in this. So we do have the kitchenettes that we're certainly willing to take out this little tiny little apartment stove, put a microwave in there, keep a refrigerator in there, and make it much more simple for them.
Yeah, 'cause the, the other thing I want to be sure that we do is, whatever we're approved to have at 521 was a bed and breakfast, that it is a bed and breakfast. If it needs to be an apartment, then we need to do some kind of variance applied for, and go through the protocols and the system for that. I just want to be sure whatever on paper we have at 521 is set up to be that.
When I got this permission, I haven't changed anything. So I, I got permission to do this. I feel like we had an inspection at that point, which means structurally, I didn't change those walls. I, you know, did, I did the kitchenettes, and that's what y'all approved.
Yeah, and, and the most important thing we come out of the day is that we leave here on the same page. We understand what you need. You understand what the county's gonna require. And from this point forward, we know exactly what's at 521. That's a bed and breakfast. And our inspectors have come and looked at it, and were cleared to put occupants in these structures and things like that. That, that's the most important thing, is that we leave here from day forward, regardless of what the past has happened, and we go from here.
And in that regard, the house is 120 years old. I am a builder, and no, no, no 120-year-old house is perfect. Do I, do I think it's safe to occupy? Yes, I certainly believe structurally it's sound. However, if, if, if we're gonna all be off the same page coming up, and we, we are asked to do $100,000, just give me time to sell it. Danny and I are at retirement age.
Sure, I understand.
And, you know, if, we don't want to be any trouble. If that's not something y'all want anymore, or you don't think I did it right?
Sure.
You know, we, we could certainly sell our property and move to North Mississippi.
We, we'll have those discussions as we go through. Let's see it, let's get them on the same page and get a game plan from there. I think Craig's got a few things just to, as far as the bed and breakfast issue and stuff.
Was this, you said it in 08?
Yes, 08 was the variant, the conditional use.
But you don't, you don't rent out 523 though, right? I mean, y'all at 523, y'all, that's a something, that's a separate.
My brother, I, I've never changed a wall. The original building plans are here.
Y'all reside there.
I have one kitchen. I have a brother and his family that live there with us, which, that's why there's more cars.
Gotcha. All right, anything?
I wanted to make clear too now, she was also approved for a, like a summer camp, after school, business there as well. And she had sent me an email and just saying that she would like that removed from her approval. And so I think we should grant her wishes on that.
And to that regard, I was accused of operating an adult daycare there. And I got the variants back out. It doesn't say child. It says daycare. You know, I, that is something I took a survey about, and that is something that's definitely needed. And this all stems from an insurance claim with the, with being denied and vindictiveness against Danny and myself about a person that doesn't even live here. That's how all these things came from my Facebook.
Well, and, and understand, once we're made aware of something, we've got a due process that we have to go through in order to be sure we evaluate everything the same way and fairly. So we've got our manuals and stuff like the same one.
As I said to Renee, why don't you come in my driveway and see how many elderly people are coming out my door that I'm taking care of? There'll be zero.
Okay. All right, Mr. Slade? Thank you, Ms. Hall. I, I think I'm good.
I'm good.
Some additional information that may be helpful to the board with respect to this particular review. The, the information that we are working from, that maybe there is more here than meets the eye as it relates to a bed and breakfast operation, comes to us from one of our elected law enforcement officers who attempted to serve process on an individual who was known to be residing at 521. When the, when the constable attempted to, to make contact with that individual, it became very difficult for him to draw a bead on exactly who he was supposed to be serving. There were a number of people in 521, and you can see the number of cars that were there. When, when he inquired about the person he was looking for, the information that he was able to glean from his search for that person was that there were multiple people who were living here on this site as their permanent dwelling. And they were pretty clear about it, that they, they intended, this is where they lived, and this is, this is where they could be found. And the person he was looking for was operating under an assumed name, so he had some difficulty there. What appears pretty apparent to, to your staff is that there's clearly more going on here than a, what, what we would perceive to be a bed and breakfast operation. Typically, a bed and breakfast is, is advertised as such. It, it is properly maintained. There is someone affiliated with that entity who is in complete charge of the facility. It's greatly, highly regulated. It's, it's kept clean, and it cycles through visitors regularly. I think all of us would agree that a bed and breakfast looks more like a hotel than it does an apartment complex, quite honestly. And so what our concern is, is that this is a glorified apartment complex. That's certainly not been approved for that. There, there was an approval in 08, but I call to your attention, that is a conditional use permit. And when information comes before you that's new, that affects the conditions by which it was approved initially, you have the right as a board to ask for inspections and reviews, any consideration that you want to have as to whether or not the conditions that were placed are being followed, number one, or whether additional conditions may need to be considered. I, I thought it was magnanimous that there was at least admission, maybe we need to revisit this issue of kitchenettes. That really lends itself to long-term stays, and I think we would be well-served to, at a minimum, have a conversion of, of anything that's in there so that, so that a person's ability to, to feed themselves inside that unit is not.
Well, and, and from the same point, as we talked about on the life safety issue, with it being inside the fire department's Reservoir Response District on that same point, and it's still, bed and breakfast would be almost in my mind still considered a commercial building at that point, 'cause it's an occupancy. That thing should be inspected by our fire department guys. They should understand and know that this is a commercial building or a structure, and I could have multiple occupants here.
That's right.
Living in different rooms. And then the entry into those rooms, I'm sure each of the doors are locked individually for safety purposes or whatever. So from the standpoint there, there, and I don't know if the fire department's done an inspection of the property.
I'm not aware of it.
And they, and they should have, under, under this circumstance. So that's what I'm not aware of. And, and again, my 100% concern is on the life safety of the people that live there in the structure. So I want to be sure it's followed on that point.
There, there's also another issue that, that may be beyond our purview, but it's certainly within someone's purview, and that is the, the accessibility of this facility. I mean, if it's being operated as a, as a, a location for the public to be served, then it's gonna have to be compliant with the ADA. And I don't think there's a workaround for that, quite honestly. But with, that's an issue that needs to be addressed. I think we would be well-served to make sure that if we are not the ones to raise that issue, that somebody is. So that's another, that's another concern. So what I would like to see.
I'm curious, how does the garbage get picked up?
I don't know.
We did this in 08, and I think we need to be fair in sense that. Just because we didn't do everything we should have done then, whenever they were more than ready, prepared to do that. Now, you know, 10 years later, we're gonna, you know, require them to do that? That doesn't really seem.
I'm curious, when we did it in 08, what we, what was the conditional use for?
To operate a bed and breakfast there?
No, but I, I guess.
For bed and breakfast.
But I guess.
In the White House, only, in the cottage.
Safe for people to stay there.
But I mean, you got bed and breakfasts all over the state, everywhere. So I mean.
Unfortunately, this is our only one.
No, I'm, what I'm getting at, Jay, is you got, there are old houses, just like this one, that historical, and they don't, I mean, I'm sure they inspect them, don't get them wrong, but I mean, there's certain things they don't, they can't change. So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm only suggesting that if, if the board in 08 approved a bed and breakfast operation, and the information before you suggests that maybe there's something different happening, I don't know if it's true or not. We need to find out. That's what I'm suggesting. Let's go find it out.
And still, if we have a occupancy.
Our definition of a bed and breakfast.
Fire department, just to be sure from the life safety standpoint of the renter or the person renting the room, or whatever it is.
Well, I mean, like that, would they, they wouldn't be required to put a smoke detector in every room?
Oh, just like any commercial business now, they gotta have their fire stuff.
What do you do with bed and breakfasts?
But my, but my point is, those, those buildings are inspected. They're inspected by the fire department.
Yeah. Jared, every bed and breakfast.
They don't have a fire alarm in every room.
Right, but there's a set of codes that go on with that.
I was just, I was just referring to if we're gonna go out and make all these, you know, big changes, that kinda, you know.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we not work with them.
No, I agree.
I am, but I am suggesting.
And that's what I want to do, on the same point. That's what I want to do, is create the communication lines. We go out, we see, we get on the same page with the halls, and get everything worked out, where everything can continue on.
Absolutely. Yeah. And I think every bed and breakfast I've ever stayed in has had a smoke alarm in the bedroom where I was.
All sleeping units are supposed to have.
Supposed to have them by the code.
Even if they're 150 years old.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Cross?
I would like to put, now, I don't think they've been in a motion, Mr. Slade, or what, but to continue on with the discussions with the halls, do a site visit, get on the same page, get everybody together, and come back with a report to let us know where we stand.
So I think what I would like to see for clarity of the record is that as a part of this review hearing, Daniel, your motion would be that our inspector, that our staff be provided access to the facility within a period of seven working days from today, so that we can visually observe everything that's going on in that structure. And that as a part of that inspection, we invite the Reservoir Fire Department to dispatch someone to come and conduct a fire review and make whatever recommendations or notes need to accommodate. and make whatever recommendations or notes need to accommodate that review. Those two things, I think, need to happen within the next seven days.
With a consideration that it is a historical.
That's correct.
That's right.
And if the, if the inspection cannot.
There's going to be some retrofitting stuff that's not going to be applicable in this situation.
Right.
We totally get that, without a question. So.
We would not be going in to, to suggest that we're going to shut something down. It would be to make a review. This is part of the review hearing.
Correct.
Is to give our staff access so that we can see what's happening, and then report back to the board. That's the purpose of that. It could be ultimately that the recommendation is that changes are absolutely required for life safety issues.
Sure.
And that, that maybe we need to take some further action beyond that, but we don't know that right now. We haven't seen.
Our number one concern right now needs to be the life safety issue of the tenants that are inside of it. Are we complying in the fire department's inspection, just as they would inspect a normal commercial structure in the area?
That's right.
Same exact protocol.
So we would want that to be done within the next seven working days. And if we can't conduct the review within the seven working days, my suggestion would be that at the, that at the next available board meeting, which I think will be on the fifteenth, that we go ahead and set this for an, an additional review.
Okay.
So that if we're not able to get that review conducted within that timeframe, then as of the setting on the fifteenth, your, this board would have the option to withdraw the conditional use.
Ms. Hall, do you want to say something else? Yes, ma'am.
Today I was supposed to be in another city.
Okay.
And I hope that I have no opportunity next week to do this. I have to be mobile.
Tell me, tell me a timeframe.
I have to go train next week to be in the board.
Tell me a timeframe for you that would be suitable.
Um, if it could just be the following week, I'll make sure that.
Because next, next week's Labor Day. So, Mr. Slay, can we move that to say fifteen days?
Yeah, I, it's the board's pleasure. I just pulled that completely out of a random area.
Would fifteen days work, Ms. Hall?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
I, I would like to suggest, however, that given the timeframes, that we make sure that this review be done before our meeting on the fourteenth of September.
Can we do that?
Okay, so the review is going to have to be completed before the fourteenth. That's our next board meeting after the fourth. So we, we need to make sure that we time this correctly.
That's fifteen days, Ms. Hall.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so we'll do that. And it'll be done before the fifteenth? Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. He gives us fifteen days.
What is the protocol, or, or, what is the difference? If the sheriff's department gets a call, come out here, a tenant is drunk and fighting, or tearing up one of my rooms, or, what can you, I mean, I know if it's a house, or whatever, you gotta have them evicted. You're renting a room at an apartment, but at a bed and breakfast, how is that supposed to? Because I can see, if you tell them to leave, and then the law enforcement comes and says, ah, you gotta go through justice, and that could be.
It's a place of public accommodation. It really does put the sheriff in a tight spot. He's got, essentially, he's got to work from the standpoint, this person who is being unruly, probably not in my presence now that I'm here, that person who's being accused of being unruly, is telling me that they, that they are renting an area, or they've been invited here? And it's a place of public accommodation. Very difficult position. Unless that officer sees evidence that there's been an assault, or some other commission of a crime, somebody punched somebody, and somebody's bleeding, then, you know, we've got something we can work from there. They're going to be in a really tight spot if that person says, I've been invited here.
Is that the same for Ramadien? If you get a call, and, so these people aren't paying, they haven't paid me in two days, and they won't leave.
Right.
Yep.
I was upset.
If they're a guest and they pay a customer, then that changes the whole deal.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the paying customer.
Right, if it's the paying customer.
And they're not, so they hadn't paid in two or three days.
Okay, that's simple.
So.
That's simple. I mean, the sheriff's department, we deal with criminals. So I cannot evict them. I cannot make them leave. Now, if it is somebody who is there simply trespassing, they're not renting property, they're not supposed to be on the property, and the property owner wants us to have them removed, we can have them removed. If they're there visiting someone who is a guest, who is paying, changes the whole situation, because now that renter has some rights. So they have the right to have people, if I don't, I'm not talking about disorderly, I'm talking about fighting, that's, that's criminal. So we can do something. They're just there, they don't want them there. It's a touchy situation.
Rights, people have their rights, man. Yeah. What's our pleasure here?
All right, so, Mr. Slay, that, into that motion, and the point of this whole thing is, if we look back and think of a few things, or examples, in nineteen seventy-eight, there was a deal in Biloxi, Mississippi, where two firemen go into a structure, single-family dwelling, Ms. Hall, with a bed and breakfast on the inside. There'd been modifications, and things changed to those individual rooms. Both of those firefighters got trapped in, in, in a couple of areas of it. Because of the modifications, they weren't inspected, and two firefighters died. That's Biloxi, Mississippi, in nineteen seventy-eight. So we have similar instances such as this, which is why we need to go through from the safety standpoint to, to look at those areas. So I just want to mention those things, as the importance of driving this inspection over the next ten to fifteen days, so we get it complete by the meeting on the fourteenth, which I think is a Friday, which gives us at least that whole week, which is the week after next, as you'd mentioned. So that'd be my motion, as Mr. Slay so eloquently described.
Well, I'm going to try. To help Renee out with the minutes, just for clarity purposes, what we, what we have decided, I think, is that we're going to continue this review hearing until September the fourteenth. There will be an inspection by our staff and by the fire department, reservoir fire department. That, that will have to take place on or before September thirteenth. Okay? Everybody's clear?
We need to put a, we need to narrow it down, man.
Well, it's just complete, so I mean.
And then you'll have a report come back to you from Renee on the fourteenth?
On the fourteenth.
That, that, that can update you on what their finding is going on. And the fire department, I hope, my, my hope that the fire department will at that point get a visual on the innards here, know what's going on there, make recommendations with the, with respect to life safety issues, and, and give the board a more complete picture.
Mr. Renee, that good with you?
That is.
Ms. Hall? Okay, good. That'd be my motion.
Just the, the fire department stuff is all separate from us, though, right? I mean, they got their own.
Sorta, sorta.
We're just inviting.
They come out in my office, and they make me go, you know, put my batteries in my.
Where's your office at?
It's not, I don't want to tell everybody.
It's in the city? It's in the city?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the fire, the fire department, the reservoirs protection district, which still falls under our preludes to a point, so it should mirror, it should mirror.
We're just inviting, for convenience sake, we're out there anyway, let's go ahead and get that done.
I mean, I was just asking, I, I know, like, fire department, they seem to, you know, be able to come in and shut you down if you don't have your, you know, all your little ducks in a row they want you to have.
It depends on what the violation is. The point of the fire department doing inspections on these.
They've always been nice enough to give me time, get some new batteries.
And that's the plan.
We need to talk to them.
If there's a legitimate life safety issue, it needs to stop, and it stops.
All right.
I think, I think it'd be helpful if the county and the, and the fire department could go together. That way, they can kind of put their heads together at the same time to solve some code violations if they're in there.
Mr. President, that's my motion, what Slay said. Do you get that?
Nice to motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Next meeting will be held on Thursday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, at nine a.m. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the planning commission? Somebody who about Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison, all discussion, say aye. All opposed, like sign. We are adjourned. We are now convening the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting, which includes our public comment. These folks, if they still here, they deserve a gold star for putting up with it all. Is Mr. Chris Dito here? Come on up, Mr. Chris. We appreciate y'all's patience. Tell us where you live, Chris, and share with us. You've got about three to four minutes, please, sir.
I live in East Haverly Estates. My name is Chris Dito. Hey, Mr. Cross, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
We have begun a rental business. We have identified a need. We were led by God, and people want to move into Rankin County. And in over six weeks, we've got two hundred applicants to move in here. Even highs, wherever, they want to come to our county because it's safe, goes through system. So that's what we're doing. That's our main focus. God has opened another door for us to help. From a commercial standpoint, we want to open a venue in Rankin County. There's a real nice venue in Highes County. Thank you, Providence Hill. I'm not sure if I visit that place, but they really cater to the white collar. And we want something that everyday person can go to. And what we need your help with is resort status. So I'm turning it to my business partner, Sam.
All right, so let me stop just for a second. Samantha Rainier, listen to me just a second, Steve. When we get into the rodeo business, she making out race some of your people?
Bring it.
Samantha, tell them about your rodeo stuff.
I do barrel racing currently, but I used to do a little bit of team roping and breakaway roping, a work.
World champion team up there.
No world champion.
He's my world, Gaze, Gaze is my world champion.
Southeastern Circuit champion.
So you're my number one male cowboy. She's my number one female cowgirl.
To be honest with you.
You see, I said cowgirl.
I didn't, I've never competed against a girl in rodeo, so I can't.
I think we're kind of digressing here.
Sorry about that. I'm sorry. But if I, I don't get many, I don't get many rodeo options to pull that in, you know what I'm saying?
I appreciate that.
I was trying.
No, I, I believe I'm going to decline. I've got a little sore neck.
I understand, I understand.
I got the perfect horse. You can even borrow it.
All right, man, sorry about that.
There you go.
Um, so basically, what Chris was talking about is, we're wanting to create a venue within Rankin County. It does cater to your blue collar community. So what we plan to have is a large barn venue. It's also going to hold boarding courses. We'll offer riding lessons, guided trail rides. We'll be able to have weddings, corporate retreats. We'll have two state-of-the-art pavilions that'll be on the other side of a lake. So you can have two different venue options. We're looking at having two different sporting clay ranges. There'll be five box ranges, throw the different types of clays. We'll have hiking trails, golf carts for rent to ride the trails, stocked lake. We'll do small little cabins. So if you did come out for a wedding, your family wants to stay for the weekend, you can actually rent cabins from us. We'll have two lofts above the barn, a bridal and groom suite. They can be used for the day or overnight. But as he was talking about Providence Hill, they do cater to a white collar community, so it's very exclusive. It's hard for your everyday person to go. So we are trying to cater to that side of things. We also plan to partner with local businesses to help increase their business. So if there's a local spa or hair salon, we'll sell packages at our venue from them for our wedding parties. It'll help our venue, but it'll also help the local business. So we're going to try and use our business to help others. We are looking at a fifty-four acre property. We haven't put our bid in. We haven't put an offer yet. That's why I'm not going to disclose the address just yet, because we're not actually in it. But it would be about fifty-four acres to a hundred is what we're looking for.
I think I'd speak for the board. I think we'll be very receptive to the, to that concept and that plan. And I think it's probably more beneficial, once you kind of nail down your location, maybe to visit with that particular supervisor of that district. And that way, you can kind of, you know, plot it out, Mr. Slay, Ms. Oster, and other folks that are necessarily kind of moving forward. But I think.
Well, we don't, we don't have authority to do resort status.
That's, that's going to require something like what they had to do up there on.
Yeah, you'd have to get your.
Yeah, that's, but, yeah, I think, as far as an endorsement from us, I think the board would be very receptive to work with you and help you move that project down the road, if, you know, if you're able to put something together, you know, on the land deal and stuff like that.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, I actually do believe the piece of property we're looking at is in your district.
Okay, that'd be great.
We may try to get with you soon.
Get with, call Ms. Janice behind me, and she'll get with Mr. Slay's schedule and y'alls, and we'll make something work, and have a sit-down, and we can kind of go into more details of what other things you may have to do, and, because it is going to involve the state delegation, our Rankin County delegation, to, to help foster that, that, that concept. But, but, yeah, we'd be happy to sit down with you.
Okay. We plan to try and get the property secured within the next two months. That way, we can have all of our permits and ducks in a row. We don't plan to start construction until the beginning of the year, giving us plenty of time to sit and talk and get everything together.
I would suggest that you secure an option, or that you do a conditional sales contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
Condition on the county's receptivity to all of your plans, for you to fight off buying a piece of property that, that might not get where you want to go ultimately. That's free advice.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate it. I can't hear a word you're saying, John, you sound deaf. Carl's still, I see Carl sitting out there, so I can't hold that him coming up. Come on up, Carl.
Good morning, and I would like to remind the board that I'm not part of the leases here. Just up front. Yeah, I hope I'm behind you there.
You've still got three minutes.
Yes, sir. I can do it faster if you'd like. I just wanted to give you a quick update. It's been a few months since I've been here. Y'all have all seen the construction going on for the most part. Courthouse is, is about thirty-four percent complete. Mr. Gaines was telling me, and I have no, neither of us was commenting, that the mayor had questioned about the closure of North Street. We, I'll get back to the contractor. They've run into a problem with digging that, it's a drainage going underneath North, North Street that ties back into the, to the retention pond on the east side of Mr. Mainer. And that was all done to save about a hundred thousand dollars. But anyhow, with all the rains they've had during the spring and everything, every time they get down in there, the, the equipment gets stuck. And then they ran into, of course, when you start digging up something, you ran into a water line and sewer. So I am going to contact them to find out, because they are about twice as long as I had figured getting that done. And I will report to the mayor what the status of that is, to get it reopened. You know, they're putting up retaining walls, they're starting to do some inside work now. It took forever to get out of the ground because of the site and the rain. So they're about thirty-four percent complete. Mr. Mainer is going actually a little bit faster, even though they, they, they're about twenty-seven percent complete. They're getting ready to start work on the dirt work for the outbuilding parcel. We have met with both parties on keying and security. And those will be some, and I'm getting ready to give you a cost, updated cost estimate in just a minute. We've met with that, and we think we got that all coordinated. Now, the third part of it, and I don't think I've ever given y'all this, this is just where we're at on the Mr. Mainer, I mean, the K nine facility.
Thank you.
And looking back at my records, I don't think I've even shown you what that is. But we're trying, we've drawn plans on that, or at least most of the plans. And we've been pricing that, and our prices have been coming back extremely high. So we've been doing things to try and move it, been working with the sheriff's department. And actually, what we've done to save a hundred thousand dollars is we moved the building. It goes, if you'll look at the first page, it's going next, in between the outbuilding and Mr. Mainer. We did have a bigger parking lot for new parking, but that put the building back into the side of the hill, and we had a sixty thousand dollar retaining wall, and other sixty thousand dollars worth of dirt. So we've moved the building back up. We lost about half of that parking, but that's going to save about a hundred thousand dollars. But you can see, it's, it's a new facility. The last page will show you, for ten, ten kennels. It's a pretty simple building. Part of the kennels on one side will be heated and air-conditioned. The other part will be just open to the outside, where they can be. But, and, and, you know, this, I didn't realize the investment that the sheriff's department has in these animals. So you've got one to two hundred thousand dollars worth of animals probably sitting in there. So this, this building is probably going to be, right now, we're projecting it to be somewhere around five hundred thousand dollars. Which seems like a lot for, for this, but we're still working on trying to get that down. But it will have to be at least on three sides, all brick. We've looked at the possibility of doing metal siding, but this is in the city of Brandon, so we're going with brick. And it's, you can see in elevations, it's very simple. It's just low-bearing masonry and, and a single slope. So that's where we're at on that. We hope to have it done, tied in with the construction of Mr. Mainer. We're getting prices from the Flagstar Construction, which is doing the Mr. Mainer.
Brick our doghouse.
Brings up.
You made the call about losing parking. How is the parking overall going to be maintained out there? I mean, that, you know, that's always an issue we have to deal with.
It is. We added, originally, we were adding about twenty-five. Now with this, we're adding about fifteen. We're losing about ten additional spaces. And this will be, I guess, the staff, maybe, and maybe a few boosters for the.
Business will be looking back. Well, if there are business, very, very limited business, we may need more employees. So we're actually, you know, we're losing little, so we were gaining parking spots.
It, it is, it is an issue, it is an issue, Bob. It's just, you know, we've gone the side of the hill back there. Everything we do costs extremely on the dirt side of it. Both projects, like I said, we're trying to get this done as a change order. If we cannot get a, if we can't get satisfied with the cost of it, then we would recommend putting it in separate bids. But you really, you can see the vicinity, all these things, and having a separate contractor in between the two buildings is just going to create a nightmare. We've got a project up in Mississippi State right now, where we have a separate site contractor and a separate building contractor. Saves some money initially, but now they're pointing fingers on who's holding who up. So we really want to avoid that here. And plus, that would allow Mr. Mainer and the kennel facility to be finished at the same time, if we can do it. But we're. But we're, you know, we're real shocked at some of the costs we've been getting. So we're meeting with them to see what we can be doing on that. Both projects, the courthouse and the Mr. Mainer, right now are scheduled to be completed sometime March, April. If we don't get any more rain. And so what I wanted to do today is just briefly, I'll go over in more detail. Just where we're at on cost, obviously that's always the key factor. And this is a spreadsheet.
Thank you.
Kind of tell you where we're at and the status of things. I'll go through it quickly, but I'll be glad to go line, item by line, item. I just don't wanna hold y'all up any longer than you need to. But on that first page, that's strictly the courthouse. You can see what we bid, what we budgeted, what the current standing is and what the change is. And the red is under budget items. So you can see we've got the base building. We've already let, or at least ordered, a good deal of the furniture and the shelving. That's already finalized, that cost is set. Audio, visual, landscaping, those are budget items that we're working on right now. We're hoping to get those cost in a little bit less than what we're budgeting. We got a credit on some steel beams. You may remember, we added $60,000 to add that dirt over to Mr. Mainer, but we really, in reality, saved about a couple of hundred thousand from what we're seeing in dirt price. We had a savings in the retaining wall change. A lot of that was eaten up by some other additions that were eaten, but that still worked into net savings. And we don't have, you haven't approved it yet, but we have security and access control. We had budgeted $200,000. The prices on that actually came in at $300,000. And we still need to add three more cameras, I think, to that as a request. Cameras would be in the evidence rooms. But we're still under total, under the budget of about a quarter million dollars still. Now, that includes a $100,000 contingency, which we have not talked. So we're still underneath that one. Going to the Mr. Mainer project, the base bid, we were, you know, $950,000 under that base cost. Landscaping, we have not, we've got a $50,000 allowance for. Security and control, we had budgeted 200, that came in at 235. If you remember, they ran into all sorts of debris and bad soil over there. That added another $151,000. We've got some changes requested. Some of this was requested by the sheriff. We had to add a laundry sink, a sink in the laundry room, a service sink. City of Brandon required us to change to add a door for codes. We got into a discussion on that, interpretation of some codes, and we didn't agree with them, but it doesn't really matter. But anyhow, the bottom line is we're having to add some doors and some security glass. That's about a $7,000 add. And then we're adding some additional security controls to the doors. It wasn't in prime logic, didn't pick up in their original price. We're still way under budget on that project. So that's gonna allow us to take those funds and push them to the K-9 facility. We had originally budgeted $350,000. We think right now our pricing is at 550, so we're still working on that. But anyhow, I know, we're still looking at that. If you go down to the bottom line, the last thing, though, if you look and see, you know, if all this is coming out of the $25 million bond. We're, I heard they're coming. Projected cost and current cost is 24 million, 600 something thousand. So we still have, including the contingencies, we still have a $490,000 cushion to work with. Now, I do anticipate there's still gonna be some other things that come up. But at this point, we don't see anything major. You know, assuming our K-9 facility doesn't keep rising in cost. That's where we're at. We looked at, we did look at trying to reduce the size of the K-9 facility, but really the sheriff needs the 10 kennels. We looked at trying to reduce them to eight, but that really doesn't work. My understanding is that they've had several requests for cadaver dogs and explosive dogs that they don't really have right now, if I'm sure I think that's the case. So we really do need, it allows for them to really move forward in the future. But I can answer any of those questions that you may have, if any of this makes sense.
I think we'll name that dog pen Raymond's do.
Dog kennel.
Look, the first price I got, the contractor told me to come before the board and tell you that, and I said, there's no way, I can't use the word I used, that I was gonna do that. So we're still working on it, because I am shocked. I was shocked at the 315, 50 budget we put. But, so I'm meeting with Sam next week to go through each item, see what we can do, if anything else. It's just, CM, on the inside, I just painted CMU block, on the outside, there is brick.
It's just Flagstar you're sitting down around? Do you feel like they kind of think they got us?
Well, that's our first thought, and that's why we can bid the project at some point. If we don't, I wouldn't recommend bidding it while they're still on site, because you just. But honestly, Bob, we've seen on small projects such as this Mr. M, uh, dog kennel, prices are coming in way, way high, because there's so much work out there. The subcontractors, they've got other big projects they can make money on, so these little small things. I don't doubt that some of that is happening with their subs. I sure do. But anyhow, that's.
Any other questions for Carl? Carl, we appreciate it. Thank you for joining us today.
Y'all not gonna drag me to justice court. I'm okay. Thank y'all.
Not yet.
Anybody else for public comments? David, come on up. Sorry, I didn't see you behind.
The doghouse, no. Thank y'all for allowing me to come and be in front of y'all today. I want to sincerely thank y'all for voting us in for another three-year contract extension and how proud we are to service Rankin County. And again, y'all know Ty, he's our district manager over this area. If there's anything we can ever do for y'all, please reach out and let us know.
We'll stick Janice on you, so don't worry.
You do, yes, sir.
I thought we had something go out, when we got him here, didn't we have something go out last night?
We did, we did, and we've already addressed the issue.
When Janice sends an email at nine o'clock, it must be something serious.
Ty, continue.
It's no big deal.
It got my attention, and we were talking until about 10:30 about that issue last night. So we started on last night. We did. If I get in trouble over here, Janice, you put me in jail, I wanna stay with the dogs.
It's a good spot. It's a good spot.
They driving the cops to the housing around here.
That's right.
But sincerely, thank you guys for everything. All right, thank you.
Appreciate you gentlemen, thank y'all for coming. Moving on, anybody else for public comments? If not, we'll move on to Mr. Word.
Hey, good morning, I'm gonna be really, really brief on you. A couple of weeks ago, I sent a contract from AT&amp;T on our 911 service to Mr. Slay for him to review. I believe he's done that, and I'll allow him a comment on that. I'm not gonna get into the particulars of the legal jargon inside of the contract. What I want to let you know is this contract is done every five years between Rankin County and AT&amp;T. And we have come out really, really good on the negotiations with this particular contract. We're able to get all brand-new hardware, all brand-new software, and all six PC apps. It's over 20 locations that we're gonna have all brand-new hardware and software with the addition of a brand-new mapping system, which we've not been able to use our mapping system for about two years, because it's obsolete and there are no updates for it, and it's no longer being updated or serviced by AT&amp;T. We're also gonna be able to get six new lines over at the sheriff's department. It's zero cost to us, which is adding to our redundancy. Should we have another fiber cut, we've got those actually terminated there. This is something that you were brought back in December, if my memory serves me right, which is going to increase our monthly charge from the $32,000. It was gonna go up considerably with all of the additions. This contract has been negotiated to where we're gonna get all of these upgrades. We're getting all the Viper node, the satellite Viper node. Everything is in here at absolutely zero increase of cost over the current contract. And I wanted to let you know that I absolutely had zero to do with this. I asked Melissa Bryant to take this bull by the horns, and she has. And she's spent about the last probably six or seven weeks with AT&amp;T on multiple phone calls and several visits to get this contract negotiated. And I just wanted you guys to know that it was not me, it was absolutely, Melissa Bryant has done a tremendously good job on that. I also wanted to let you know as well that Melissa has recently been reappointed to the CMRS board by the governor. This is her third four-year term on that. She was appointed the last go-around by Governor Bryant as well, and this one too. So that's a huge thing for Rankin County to actually have the chair of the CMRS board, which they handle quite a big chunk of money that goes out to our cell phone carriers. And I think it's really good for us to have the representation on that board. So biggest thing I wanted to tell you guys is it is here, the contract is before you, and that Melissa Bryant has done an extremely good job on the negotiations. As far as any legal jargon on that, I'll leave that up to Mr. Slay, if he can address any issues that you may have as far as that's concerned.
This is actually just an amendment to the existing agreement. I will review it and I'm satisfied with the language.
I'll make that motion for approval, Mr. President.
Second. Motion of Mr. Crowe, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Word, if you've got something else.
If you'll give me about another 60 seconds. On Tuesday.
I doubt, I really doubt you.
He's not gonna be able to do it.
Just kinda give you a little update. About, I believe it was on Tuesday, we had a, received a call out. We actually called out about five different departments on this particular call. We ended up with four firefighters out of five departments, and we ended up with four guys from EOC there. EOC was the first one on scene, they heard a, it was just an activated fire alarm at a residence. And it was actually in your district. They, our Brett Ishi, our fire coordinator, arrived on scene, he hears the alarm going off, doesn't really see a lot of smoke, and hears a person inside hollering, can you please come and get me? And he forced entry into the home, broke the door almost completely off the hinges, went in, got the fire extinguisher, it was out. And this guy was, he's bedridden, absolutely no way to escape the home, he was there by himself. And as far as I'm concerned, we can chalk that up as a save here for Rankin County. The guys did really good. Just last night, I was listening to the radio about nine o'clock, Pila Hachi got called out to a medical call at a local gas station. It was called out as, they were dispatched as difficulty breathing. They arrived on scene very, very quickly, and they immediately called, I heard them call the dispatch office, said they were working a full code, it was full arrest. Within probably about four minutes, they called back, they had gotten a pulse back. And they were just doing rescue breathing on this individual when they transported. I do not know the status of the patient at this point, but I can tell you this. They were, they were on the ground with no pulse and no respirations. And through the efforts of Pila Hachi Fire Department, those guys were able to revive that patient up until the point that they were transported. Again, I do not know what the outcome was once they arrived at the hospital. But again, another save from your responders that you guys are graciously equipping. Last thing is on the, I'm just gonna call them the CPR devices. There's multiple names for them that we did the other day. Just wanna give you an update of where those are. We've got them located now southwest Star, Florence, Monterey, Shell Road, Puckett, Pila Hachi, and Lake Harbor. So we've got a really good coverage map on those out, and they have been used, I can assure you. I wish they would sit on the truck and not be used, but they, it is just the nature of the beast, so. Other than that, that's all I got, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Word, we appreciate it. Mr. Slay, you got anything in your area?
Y'all hear from me shortly.
Ms. Oster.
Yes, I have a few things this morning. First one is ratification of approval for one deputy to travel with the Pila Hachi football, high school football team, and that was August the 24th and 5th to Orange Beach. And Pila Hachi covered the cost of their meals and lodging.
Motion of Mr. Crowe, second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
What is this for?
Pila Hachi had asked them to go.
Football game.
It was football game.
Was told to me that they didn't get the opportunity, for those students to get the opportunity to get much outside the state of Mississippi. And it was an opportunity, I think they put together to go down to Mobile to play, spend the night, and hit the beach and have a little fun, and I heard it was a tremendous success. Appreciate the sheriff going with them. Motion by, I think that's the motion only made, seconding, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries, next, Ms. Oster.
B is approval to allow AT&amp;T FirstNet Authority as a vendor to provide services with Rankin County for first responders and other qualifying emergency response personnel.
Yeah, I wanna make one comment on that, recommend for approval. This is important, because this allows all of our first responders, law enforcement, fire guys to, who are paying their own personal cell phone device, to have access to this network at a lower price, better speeds, better communication. So this is gonna help all of our deputies, it's gonna help all of our law enforcement from police departments, fire departments across the whole county, to allow them the opportunity to do that.
This is one we talked about, that we would be on that same program.
Yeah, there's three options to this whole thing, and I think Ms. Laura will go through it. The first one is, one, allowing the service in Rankin County, where those guys have the choice on their personal devices to go get access to this thing. That's what the first one's for. Second one's for the MiFi devices. Ms. Laura will talk more about that in just a second. The third one would be moving our county phones, the sheriff's office phones, the EOC phones and those phones into that FirstNet. That's something coming in the future, once we talk about it, get through the contract issues and fees. Ms. Laura, I think she's working on that deal, so that's the third issue of it. First two are critical, that you're gonna see right here as far as getting it going into the county. So the third part of that whole segment of the AT&amp;T FirstNet's gonna revolve around moving our phones from ceasefire, the emergency response phones from the law enforcement, EOC, to the AT&amp;T Net. That's coming in the future, once she gets the price comparison of what it's gonna cost.
That's the one, the only thing they have is to offer.
I think I missed, can you repeat that?
Absolutely, which part?
I got flash cards right here. When I turn the board means I prepared for flash cards. You ready?
Everybody, motion by Mr. Crowe, second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries, next, Ms. Oster.
The next one is approval for Rankin County to switch from Verizon to AT&amp;T FirstNet for qualifying MiFi devices. Something on the heels of this, let me tell you real quick. It is a state contract, but it's through ITS. So our purchase clerk reached out to them, because you know, you have certain things that you have to do. And they responded by saying that they do have a contract, but they're working on a document that would provide us instructions of how we need to go about making this purchase. And they anticipate having it ready in the next couple of weeks. And when they do, they'll send us the documentation on how to go through ITS to get this service for ourselves.
I'll make that motion.
Motion of Mr. Crowe, second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries, next, Ms. Oster.
Before that one, what Daniel was talking about, the next ones is, there's only gonna be certain phones that will be moved from our existing ceasefire, which would be those that qualify for it. But some phones have been upgraded, so we're trying to get the cost if there's an early termination on those phones.
If there is, we'll wait till their time expires.
What it's gonna cost for us to do.
Every one of them's gonna be different, you know, the contracts.
Right, depending on. The next item I have is authority to appoint Michelle Denham as a temporary assistant purchase clerk until a vacant position can be filled. That is just in case that our purchase clerk has to be out for some unforeseen reason, that there would be somebody that could give a purchase order number out.
Motion by, who was it? Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Agendas, folks, take a quick peek at it, 'cause CNN regular for Tuesday's meeting, not Monday. We'll all be laboring on Monday to celebrate Labor Day. Any questions, thoughts, comments?
Oh, the deal on us paying, you made a comment the other morning about us paying.
Beaver control?
No. From our lawsuit, losing, you know, the airport deal? Why aren't we paying the schools portion, why don't they pay it?
Well, we talked about that, I don't know that we talked about it all together, Jay. That they had already, at the time that this got itself worked out, the school district has already set its budget. Its budget was in place before ours. I think at the end of July, their budget's in place. And so they would not have anything close to what would be required of them to pay this back, to remit these funds. They wouldn't have that available as a budgeted item. This way, it gives us an opportunity to go to them and work out some arrangement for them to reimburse the K-